Good afternoon, everyone. Here we are getting ready to start. Welcome to our wonderful folks out in the gallery. Okay, and we're going to start off today with a city council briefing on the legislative
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, members of council, and Mr. City Manager. I'm here today to provide you a presentation on the city's legislative agenda process. This brief presentation will cover the existing procedure, the timeline we are proposing for crafting this year's legislative agenda, and provide background on how comparable localities handle their legislative agendas. At the conclusion of this presentation, we're looking for guidance on the proposed timeline and how the council would like to move forward with this process. Just had it working. Thank you for bailing me out. I appreciate it. Would you mind going to the next one for me there? Sorry about that. The legislative agenda lays out the official legislative and budgetary requests from the city to the Virginia General Assembly and includes important policy positions that provide guidance to the government relations team for our advocacy efforts during the General Assembly session. While the city's legislative agenda has historically been an extensive collection of priorities, it is not meant to be an all-inclusive listing of issues that are important to the city. We begin the process of crafting the legislative agenda by surveying the department heads for legislative proposals and needs. We first sent out an email to all department heads on July 25th requesting proposals and setting an end-of-August deadline for responses. We also included a memo to council in your August 4 package that requested items as you had them ready. Once proposals are received, they are vetted by department directors, government relations teams, the city manager, and the city attorney's office. Proposals are brought to the city council for consideration as a draft agenda. Once the council has heard the draft agenda, we seek individual sponsorship of each legislative item. As a reminder, for a legislative agenda item to be considered in the final package, it needs to have a council sponsor. Public hearing is then held as part of a city council meeting. The final agenda is adopted by city council, and then we communicate that legislative agenda to our Virginia Beach delegation and seek bill patrons. Here's the proposed timeline that we have laid out. So as I mentioned, in August, we started to survey different departments. During the month of September, we will take those proposals and review them, make sure that they are viable. We plan to bring a draft legislative agenda to the council at either the October 3 or October 10 meeting. That would leave a public hearing for October 17. We would then take the feedback from the public and from the council and revise the draft agenda and bring forward a package to you for passage on November 14. At the council retreat and through some discussions at these council work sessions, multiple council members have expressed an interest in making changes to how the legislative agenda is crafted and approved. Some ideas that have been mentioned include: creating an official policy, increasing the requirement for legislative proposals that are proposed by a member of council, requiring three members of council to sign on to that proposal to get it into the draft legislative agenda, similar to how you guys get things on to the city council agenda, eliminating the sponsorship requirement, and increasing the threshold for approval of the legislative agenda. In preparation for this briefing, we talked to some of our counterparts from around the Commonwealth to get a sense of how they create their legislative agendas. Some things that we found is that the vast majority of them don't have an official formal policy. They tend to be driven by the departments themselves. They're typically adopted unanimously, but it's not required, excludes issues that have been entangled in national political debate, and they work to keep the document as nonpartisan and consensus-driven as possible. As I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, we are looking for guidance on both the proposed timeline and on the procedure council would like us to take in crafting the legislative agenda, either using the process as has been done in the past or by crafting a new official
Let me just start things off. And one of the things I think is important, that traditionally over the years, we submitted many initiatives or legislative package that really didn't get much action. I think perhaps the thing is maybe lessen things to the things that we really have a passion about that really need to be done. But the other thing is too, there was some ambiguity over, quite frankly, a number of years. What items should move forward? Should we have a type of threshold? Now, we have been told by the delegation for a charter change, they would prefer a unanimous vote. And the other thing is also for our point of view to avoid ambiguity, to at least have a supermajority vote on the certain items that we bring forward. But once again, I think, especially with a charter change coming up, as we're proposing, perhaps a unanimous vote may be a high threshold, so if we could go to at least a supermajority on that. But I think the things that we do decide that we want to move forward, I think we send a clear and coherent message to the delegation. If we at least send in the things that are a high priority to us, and especially, I think, the other thing too, not national things, but things that are germane to our city, but that we should agree, my point, we're open for discussion, that any item we send to the General Assembly should have at least a supermajority vote. Then I'll open the floor up now. Rosemary?
Yeah, we talked about this at the retreat. In fact, on Friday, Councilman Remick and I met with a sitting senator, and he said, "You know, we're not going to even touch something that has a five to six vote, or six to five votes." If it doesn't have a strong majority of the council, we really don't want to be pushing that general assembly level. Brett, you were there as well for that conversation. And if it's going to be the council's legislative policy, it should have a strong will from the council and not a divided council. It puts, kind of puts everybody in a bad spot. And we kind of saw that, what happened last year. It was a little bit difficult. So I think that supermajority is a good idea, and also, we may want to pare down how many things we actually ask for. As I mentioned at the retreat, there are some places, including the Virginia Medical League, you think about, they cover the entire state. And Amelia's been there, you've been on the legislative committee. They have lots of different things from lots of different constituencies than just one city, and they pare it down to their most important items of five or six things that are their, I guess like a star performer, that they really, really push. And their legislative package is really the most important thing that VML does, is to work on legislation in behalf of the localities that they represent. So another thing, it just seems like we have enough things to make people mad at us. You know, it seems like every time we push that red or green button, there's people out there who will be unhappy with what we do. Sometimes we're sort of like a glutton for punishment to take on things that we will never have a chance to vote on. So some of these social issues that really are the purview of the General Assembly, is that something we really want to take on, that we sort of have to carry around when it's not really our call? There's some things that we'll never vote on. So these are some of the thoughts that we're having, and I think having a policy is a good idea. So thank you, Bobby, for opening it up.
Okay, Chris, and then Sabrina.
Thanks, thank you, Mary Di. Vice Mayor Wilson. So I had a conversation with one of the senators as well, and I asked specifically, could they send me the law language where General Assembly requires unanimous support? And they responded, "It is not in the code. It is a courtesy and custom of the General Assembly that goes back hundreds of years." And so although I would love to get to unanimous support on some things, we did call a special session earlier in the year about the appointment versus special election, and look at what we're dealing with now. We have Councilman Holcomb, who's going on to be the sheriff. We have an appointment to make versus had the General Assembly taken the direction of the body, although it was six to five, we would be able to go to District One voters and allow them to select who they would like. And so although it's very nice to have unanimous, there are times like voter rights where we get to press the button, and in the previous council, six members pressed the button that their constituents wanted the opportunity to elect who they would like for their district. And so I do agree that it's better to be unanimous, but there are times, and voter rights is a time, where if we make a vote here and send that to the General Assembly, I would hope they would take action, because not taking action is actually disenfranchising the voters. And so also, as it relates to our policy about the agenda, that was early on where we had kind of adopted that. And I'm not sure, seven months now in, after speaking to some former council members, I realized that came up, and it was rejected. They didn't want to go to that, requiring three, so I'd love to have that discussion again. Thank you.
So I did not know that there was a concern about process in terms of the legislative agenda. So that's number one. If this was a conversation that was had or a concern, I certainly would like to know that. I didn't know it was a problem. But what I would prefer to discuss is how we would address what happened in January with HB 1528, looking at a policy that would prevent something like that from happening. And certainly not to dredge up all of the details, but that issue was, I don't think it was ever really resolved. And so now we're moving forward to something regarding the legislative agenda and a new But I think we need to kind of step back and look at what happened with HB 1528 and determine once the majority of the body has decided something, making sure that it goes forward in the process, not that it's stymied in the process. That's, for me, the bigger issue. Also, just in terms of deciding to have more than one person support what you're doing, I mean, it's fine if you can get it, but oftentimes, because we are 11 individuals, we have 11 different perspectives. And as, you know, Councilmember Taylor stated, it is good to come to consensus, but it's not going to happen all of the time. And so where there may be really important issues that need to be addressed, but we don't all agree, that doesn't mean that it should not be addressed. And there were some really important issues that need to be addressed, that should be pushed forward, that only a few may agree. But that's a part of democracy. And so we have to learn how to address those concerns. But I just think also, you should follow what's in the guidelines of what's in the code. If there's not a supermajority needed, why are we suggesting that? It needs to be, we need to follow what the code says unless we're going to make a change or request to make a change. I think we should do what's stated, as Councilman Taylor has said. I was not in agreement with changing the policy as we did for the agenda items, because we are different. We have different perspectives. And though we have good intentions with saying, you know, we need more than one person to support this, you have to have three, it can be used in a way to block matters from coming forward. How do I know? Because I've experienced it. Hate to see us go down the same road with the legislative agenda. I don't think it's a good idea. I disagree. And I certainly would also agree with Councilmember Taylor. We should revisit that policy. I don't think it is the best process going forward. It can be seen, and can be used in a way to buff it and to be a barrier, something that actually is good. And not just for the good of the body, but for the good of the people. A lot of times, and oftentimes, and our job is to represent the needs of the people. And so if the people are requesting certain things go forward, we should at least be able to listen to what they're saying and move forward, whether we agree as a body or not. It's the people who we represent, and we have to hold their concerns to the highest standard. That's why we serve, that's why we're here. I disagree.
Okay. If I could just make, I'll get to Josh and Barbara, and then if I could just make a firefighting point. And again, I respect what you said, Sabrina, and Chris, but a couple of factors here. First of all, the reason for this was a discussion that we had on it at the retreat, and this was a follow-up. This was an action item that we were bringing forward. And the other thing I'd like to bring up is that we have two distinct entities here where we can put anything we want on a legislative agenda. I mean, am I right in saying sometimes we set up to 40 different items at points along our time? And a lot of them went absolutely nowhere. But the other thing is too, with effective communication, there's a communicator and a receiver. In this case, the receiver are the members of the General Assembly. And they pretty much told us emphatically, emphatically, which created, added to the confusion last time, that unless there was a unanimous vote on a charter change, they would not consider it. Okay? So what we're trying to do is maybe modify things a little bit to soften things. But the other thing is too, I don't want to step on anything here, but a six-five vote is not a declarative show of total support on an item, especially if we have a bunch of high priorities. You know, the Hampton Roads Planning Commission, they send in, with all the stuff we've got, maybe five legislative items there. And I guess the idea is though, if we show that strong support, I think we've got a highly likelihood of perhaps them taking it on and actually getting it incorporated, especially if we need a charter change, like we do for the 10-1 system. But the other thing I want to point out is though, in terms of like individually, you know, once again, we are recognized as a body. But the other thing is too, the latitude that each one of us have to go to lobby for any position they want with any member of the House of Delegates or Senate is in your right and purview. In other words, if we were to send an eight-three resolution to the General Assembly, and if a council member objected to it, they still have the ability to go forward and lobby individually with the delegation. And sometimes that has proven to be effective. But once again, I think what we're trying to do here is just bring a little order. We're here for discussion and for ideas. Okay, Josh and Barbara.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Mr. McKenzie. I'm interested in this sister locality analysis and what tactics were employed to exclude issues that have been entangled in national political debate, and how have they been successful in working to keep the document nonpartisan and consensus-driven? So I guess that would just be a question I would pose to you. But on the issue of whether or not, what level of support should come out of this body to ask the legislature to act, and I would think that we would want to have as united a voice as possible as a council. And a supermajority is whatever percentage we say it is, so it doesn't necessarily have to be nine votes, it could be two-thirds, and it could be eight votes. And I think that is a good way to make sure that we are coming at it with as united a front as possible, where we don't have individual members who, and certainly it's within their right as individuals to go lobby their legislatures, but I would think that that would not be a desirable outcome for us, to have one or more of us working behind the scenes to lobby for a different outcome than what the bodies come up with. And I remember our policy change, because I remember it was something we talked about during the retreat, and I remember it was something that we voted on unanimously, and I had to look at it this weekend on February 7. That was something that we adopted unanimously as a body on a consent agenda. And I certainly respect differing viewpoints as to the issue, but I mean, for me, especially as a new council member, I value talking to each, as many of you as I can before bringing an item before the body, because chances are, y'all are going to have helpful suggestions for me, possible improvements, and just the benefit of the years and experience behind you, I think it makes for a better product. We're going to need to get six votes anyway, so if you can't get the support of two other members to bring something forward, that's a good indicator that maybe there's some additional work that needs to be done before it gets brought to the body. And I also know that there's a lot of community groups that have come before us during workshops, and a lot of those community groups involved ask for city financial support. And I think there's certainly, there's certainly reason to make sure that the folks who are coming before us, asking for us for city support, are well-vetted and have credible asks that they're making. So I would be open to applying the same kind of rationale that we do to agenda items on the legislative agenda, find two friends to then have it brought to a discussion, and then for us to take a position on an item, I think eight votes probably makes more sense than nine. But that's kind of my viewpoint. And I would really love to hear how the other localities have remained so nonpartisan.
I was kind of hoping you were going to forget that part of it. To be completely frank with you, Councilman Shulman, in our discussions with the other localities, the point that they kind of drove home to us was that their legislative packages were driven by the city departments, and they were based off of city requests, city department requests and needs. That in general is mostly apolitical, and that was really the answer that they provided me, that their council members, their board of supervisor members typically, there wasn't a rule that prohibited it, but typically didn't interject legislative agenda items into their package. It was more of a city department-driven initiative.
Go figure. You take the politicians out of it, it's apolitical, right? Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Well, that sort of helps to answer one of my directions that I was thinking, that the whole purpose of the package, I think, is for us to let them know issues that maybe have been a problem for us to do things that we needed to do. And I think coming from the departments is right. I mean, it's that, those technical kinds of things, not those political things, because they're really going to take forward what they want to take forward, and it doesn't make a whole lot of difference what the city council says. If it's something that's political, they're not really going to listen. But I'd like to come from another direction. We've often talked about needing to get together with our other, the other bodies of the legislature, legislative process. We used to have regular times that we met with the General Assembly delegation, as well as our congressional folks. I would like to see us try to do something. I know after, they're all going to be involved in an election up until early November, but sometime a little after that, I know it gets into the holidays, but if we could just plan a time to get together with our General Assembly delegation, I know some of them, I don't even know it all, an opportunity for us just to get to know each other a little bit. And we have had breakfast, or we've had receptions, or we've had a dinner, or we have just had a meeting. So we could do it all kinds of ways, but I think it would be very good if we just had an interaction time, and if we had a legislative package by that time, we could pass it out, but just to give us a chance to make those contacts, I think would be good.
Yeah, let me just say, I concur wholly with Barbara said. There was a time where we had the delegation, the school board, and we as a body would get together. And I'll tell you what, it was not only a joint meeting, but was an opportunity for one-on-ones, getting to know new people. Certainly, we have a November election coming up for the General Assembly, and there may be some new members there and everything. But I'll tell you what, building the bridge of relationships, I think, is key. I think just by a solo act of sending in a legislative agenda item is only part of an effective communication strategy. The idea is to have ongoing, between Brett and Andrew and Patrick, and then also all of us to engage with our elected leaders, especially at district levels, for things to do. That should be an ongoing yearly thing. So Barbara, I think it would be a great idea, after the November elections, us to really host a get-together. You have a reception, you get to know each other, and then sit down and bring up the items that are important to you as individuals and to us as things. And from there, we have maybe a better idea on how to shape our policy. At this point, would it be okay, let me just throw this out, if we came up with just a draft of a thing, and I think eight-three is a fair number at starting point in discussions, and also to include the three sponsorships for point of discussion as a draft? Are we okay to do that and discuss this further as we start getting more into the legislative process? Yeah, Sabrina?
I would say no. Not until we have an effective conversation with the body, the General Assembly body, those representatives, because if there's a better way, if we can, because I think we can all agree that our communication with them is not consistent. That's something that I've heard since I've been on council. I think we have an opportunity, it sounds like, to actually sit down and engage them. I think we should sit down and engage them. I think we should do that first, see if that works during the cycle. If that doesn't work, if it seems like, or if it does work, then perhaps we've addressed the concern. I don't think the process needs to be changed, as I mentioned, but I would like to kind of address our engagement with those representatives, increase it, and then see how that plays out before I'm looking at a draft of something that I don't agree with.
Mayor, it looks like, could you go back to the timeline, Mr.? Like we're facing a pretty tight timeline if we're considering implementing a process for this year. And so therefore, I support the proposal that you just suggested that brings forward for discussion, a concept. And I'll tell you why. I've been on this body for just over four years now, and I've seen a decline in the effectiveness of our legislative requests. And I've even seen, frankly, the process go off the rails as recently as last year. I mean, that's how I see it, and that's the experience. And I think anyone who is And I think anyone who was there as an observer or who participated in that process would likely agree. We did the opposite of keeping national divisive political issues out. We brought them in. And I think what we're, I think, Mayor, what you've suggested for just discussion is to bring something forward where we can really refine the request so that it's effective to deliver for the people who live in the city of Virginia Beach. I think that's what you're seeking and I agree with you in that effort. What we want is a legislative agenda that's effective, that brings home the bacon, that represents the interests of the people who live in our great city. And we want that to be efficient and effective and impactful. And so I think that's what your, that's your goal here as well. And I hope that everyone shares that goal. And there's nothing wrong with having a discussion about a process that can help us get further down that road to a more effective, more efficient, more impactful legislative agenda request. Because frankly, I don't think our package last year was effective very much at all. And part of that had to do with all the division that existed within it.
Amelia?
Yes, just bringing in another aspect of Hampton Roads Transit, from the Hampton Roads Planning Commission, served on the state CSB as well as the college affordability. One of the things that did, again, was engage the legislative group, like what Barbara just mentioned, meeting, finding out, getting to know them and moving these forward as soon as possible. In fact, recently, they had something from ODU where they had a legislative reception. The point is getting to know these people, but we need to identify what we want because there's that time crunch, just like Michael is mentioning. And by the time we go through the discussion and this and that, they're in and things are moving and they move pretty fast up there. If you've been up there before, I tell you, they're not going to sit down and wait while Virginia Beach decides whether we're going to do this or whether we have to invite it. And just what you mentioned, if we don't have a majority on something, well, if it's not important to us, it's not going to be important to them. So this is something we really need to look at. It's nothing to do with a personal thing, but as a body, what do we want to see accomplished? We've got to discuss that. We've got Brent and the others who are now going to take the bacon up there to make it happen. But if they look at it and see, well, so and so and so, well, they're not really serious about this, only so many, it's killed.
Chris, comments, Sabrina?
I don't have a problem with moving forward with your request, your recommendation. I think, to be clear though, to the public, as I was sitting with a constituent last week, they weren't aware that we came up with the new policy requiring three and some had issues because if they have a concern. But to be very specific to the issue we dealt with earlier in the year, clearly there was miscommunication at the general assembly because it passed the first step until there was some interference and we don't want to go back, but we can all review the history. So clearly they didn't get the message that six, five wasn't supportive because it went forward until individual members started lobbying. So again, I think with voters' rights, we can, we don't have to look in the rearview mirror. Councilman Holcomb's getting ready to move on. This very issue that we dealt with, where the people through their representatives asked for something and we didn't deliver it. And I don't think it's because of the code because the first step in that process went through without a hiccup. It wasn't until there was interference. And so I'm supportive of your recommendation, but here we are with the appointment and it just seems like these dots keep connecting. And the line points directly to, we didn't give the people of Virginia Beach what they asked for. And they wanted to elect the members of council when there's a vacancy. And now we have to appoint. Thank you.
Okay, Sabrina?
So I certainly, I was going to mention the same thing Councilman Taylor mentioned. It's not the process that we had. It was the interference once we went through our process that caused the problem. That's why in my last comments, I stated, you don't have a problem with the process. It was the interference on HB 1528. Process worked. It was what was outside of the process when it went to Richmond. That's what we should be addressing because as Councilmember Taylor mentioned, we have that issue right in front of us again. And now we can't move forward with the will of the people because of that interference. So in terms of a timeframe, there may be a timeframe to get an agenda to the general assembly, but there's no timeframe urgency to changing a policy. Oftentimes when you're in a hurry to do something with a policy, sometimes you should just kind of give it an opportunity and go with some of the suggestions, as was mentioned, and I agree with consulting, you know, the body, the representatives. But I don't think there's an urgency with changing our policy. I haven't heard that. I don't know that to be true. But there is maybe urgency to get a legislative agenda to this general assembly. We have a process. Just follow what the process we already have. And that is, that's just my position and what I'm mentioning. And in terms of, you know, the representatives and those who are voicing an opinion about what comes in from this body, whether they want to do this or not, I would suggest they follow the guidelines and the rules that are set in place. You follow the guidelines and the rules, you won't have a problem. Just follow the rules, follow the guidelines. That's all they have to do. That's all we should do.
Okay, you know, at this point, you know, I appreciate the tenor of the discussion. And I think it, once again, you know, given that over time, not even just last year, some of the ambiguity and what certain members of the delegation will say, I will say emphatically that we were told that a charter change would require not only a super majority, a unanimous majority from us, but it also requires a two-thirds vote on their part too. So the more emphasis we can come, you know, clarity and definition. But the thing is, I think there is a sense of immediacy here, but let's talk about it. So is it okay, Rosemary?
I just wanted to say when I sat down with the delegation last year and went over our package, and we went line by line to see, item by item, to see who would pick it up and run with it, you know, create a bill. And we didn't say how many votes anything got, we just laid out, these are the individual things that the council has requested. And they would point blank ask us what the vote was on these items. They wanted to know. Anyway, the manager was there. They would ask us. So they want to know, it was a concern for them because they want to know where we stood on these items. So it was important to them.
And let me just say this, you know, in closing, as we move forward, you know, I think the important thing, if we can take a real takeaway from our discussion now, is Barbara, and you know, and I was going to bring it up too, that we have stronger personal interaction, you know, with our elected delegation at the time, but also find ways, even maybe periodically, quarterly or everything, you know, get together and chat and find out what's on each other's minds, what's being, I'll tell you what, if you really want to, you know, get a strength on the, on any agenda item on the legislative package, is, you know, talk to them ahead of time and find out if it could fly or not. Then they, don't forget, they have to go through subcommittees, they got to go through a whole bunch of other minutia than we got. But I think if we're firm in our commitment in solidifying our message, and that's all we're going to look for, if we can just go ahead, put up some draft stuff for us to discuss, and we'll take it from there.
And there were some things, even though we were all agreed on it, they said, we're not doing that one.
Yeah. And I'll tell you what, it's roughly two, you know, two bodies working on each other. Yeah, Patrick?
The prevailing landing spot, it sounds like, is a draft, is for the city attorney's office and my office to work together on a draft policy that looks at how things in terms of number of council members that are required to sponsor an item to end up on the draft legislative package and also what the vote threshold is to get it adopted in the legislative package, to work on a draft of that.
And then maybe even a mention about avoiding national concerns that are not germane to anything for the body. Okay?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you all very much.
And one last thing, Mayor, just, it sounds like you all, what I'm hearing is a draft policy that council then discuss and then vote on, Mr. Remick.
Yeah, yeah, they'll both discuss first.
And I'm also hearing that council wants us to work on setting up a meeting with the general assembly.
In November.
Probably a social would be better.
Yeah, yeah, a meet and greet type thing.
Just understanding that that's a public meeting. Yeah.
That's why it needs to be a social.
That's why, you know, that's why it should be in that format. And this just gives us an opportunity to meet and greet and get to know each other. But I think it's wise to wait till after the November elections. Yeah, Chris?
Just one question. Mr. Mayor, in that meeting last year, can you say if it was?
A bipartisan representation of the general assembly? I can't recall. I think everybody was there with the exception of one or two members. So everyone does get an invite though.
Everybody, oh yes.
Yeah, so last year, the council landed on the mayor and the vice mayor attending because sometimes the delegation members don't want to talk about policy matters raw without, in a public setting until they already briefed on it. But we sent an invite to every member of the delegation in the Senate and also the general assembly. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, all members of all parties from each voting district were invited and they will be again and continue. Okay? Okay, Patrick, I think we're ready for your briefing.
All right, Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, Nancy Hellman, Director of Conventions and Services Bureau, will come and brief council on the previous Victus study that council received and to get a sense of which areas council would like us to explore further in terms of determining feasibility and next steps on future investments, possible investments for sports tourism.
Welcome.
Hi, good afternoon. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Mr. Duhany, Mr. Stiles. I'm here today to revisit a presentation that former deputy city manager Taylor Adams gave you in June to discuss potential next, and to discuss potential next steps. As you're aware, the CVB engaged Victus Advisors, an independent consulting firm specializing in sports, recreation, arts, entertainment and event facilities. They provided market and financial and economic feasibility and they also assist clients with making data-driven decisions. Victus Advisors completed a Virginia Beach sports tourism venue inventory and market assessment in 2016. This study was a piece of the research and decision-making to help us develop the Virginia Beach Sports Center. In the fall of 2022, CVB re-engaged Victus to update that study and look at potential future opportunities. The stakeholder and local sports tourism communities were invited to participate. Victus identified three new sports tourism development opportunities and identified several current facilities that could be considered for reinvestment. The three new-to-market sports tourism facilities were identified as an indoor and outdoor action sports facility. Victus noted that sports, action sports are authentically Virginia Beach and a facility like this could include skateboarding, BMX, parkour, bouldering and others. An outdoor baseball facility, Victus found that Virginia Beach is lacking in a tournament-quality baseball facility and recommended an eight-plex facility with lights, adjustable fences and other amenities. An indoor ice facility, Victus said that there's a demand for a standalone multi-sheet ice facility that would need seating, professional operation and tournament amenities. Several current facilities were also identified for potential reinvestment. The YMCA is home to the only 50-meter pool in the city. The Hampton Roads Soccer Complex is a community amenity and also a tournament facility. And the Princess Anne Athletic Complex is also a community amenity and tournament facility. As you can see from this slide, the city has varying degrees of operation and ownership with each of these facilities. Types of reinvestment could be converting grass fields to artificial turf, which would weatherproof tournaments, and extend playability. That's just an example of what reinvestment means. This slide shows what potential room night demand could look like and construction prices that are shown on this slide are based in $20,000 and would need some additional refining based on the market. So the goal of today's presentation is to get direction on what's next. The study information that we just discussed is really looking at what's the art of the possible. The appropriate next steps would be to do a deeper dive in feasibility study, which would include competitive and comparable analysis with other facilities, building programs and recommendations and construction costs, site operations analysis, which means where would we build it and why, management options, usage estimates, programming, return on investment, potential tax generations, room night jobs and more. If we decided to complete a feasibility study on the three new venue options listed above, the cost would be approximately $62,500. There is a $6 million appropriation to date in the sports tourism infrastructure line in the FY24 CIP and 12.5 million program for FY25. I believe Kevin is here today. Yes, Kevin is here today, if you have any questions regarding the CIP. So the direction that we're seeking is as follows. It's council's direction on if we should initiate the feasibility study analysis for one or more of the future venue opportunities as recommended by Victus. The $62,500 funding needed for this project would be taken from the CVB's FY24 budget. Also, we would like to get council's direction on if and how we should allocate some of the initial FY24 spending for reinvestment in existing sports tourism facilities. There's been reinvestment interest from several existing venues like the Hampton Roads Soccer Complex and the Virginia Beach Sportsplex. Funding for reinvestment could be in design and development phase or execution of facility upgrades, which would help us modernize and become more competitive in the tourism space. Thank you very much for your time and I'll be interested in your comments.
Good, Barbara?
I don't know how much we paid Victus, but any one of us could have come up with those six things very easily. I think instead of jumping on another feasibility study, we need to get with these stakeholders. Look at who is involved. We've got the, these particular things like the soccer complex and the pool and our, and so forth. Just getting those folks together and getting their feedback and getting their advice, I think is critical at this point and I don't think it would cost us anything to do that either. But before we decide, we won't pursue with anything, I really think we need to hear from these stakeholders and get their feedback and their advice because I think they can probably be the ones who would give us the best advice. They, they're doing it. The soccer complex, my goodness, those folks have been doing that for years. They know, they know what they need to do. So I think that should be the next step.
Michael?
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Hellman. I just want to take a moment just to pause and acknowledge how important sports tourism is to the overall economic and social health of Virginia Beach. Wasn't that long ago, Virginia Beach was known as a summer tourist town and with the, through frankly, the wisdom of lots of people in our community, it developed into more of a year-round destination in many ways because of the investments and focus that was placed on sports tourism. And we're very fortunate to have that to support not only the tourism economy, which benefits us all, but also as amenities in our community. These are really important conversations and as not much of an athlete myself, I can really recognize the importance that all of these conversations have in our community and on the physical health too, not just social, social, physical and economic health of our community. And they're part of the really, you know, things that we're very proud of when we think about Virginia Beach, very excited about. So I do want to acknowledge that. I guess I have a question though about where you put first things, well, let me offer the caveat. BMX, skateboarding, that type of action sports. BMX, skateboarding, that type of action sports, surfing, these are, they are authentically Virginia Beach, and there's a reason why Jackalope was successful. There's a reason why there was such an emphasis, a push among the BMX community that I've connected with to have more recreational and competitive opportunities, and it's because it's part of who we are, it's part of our DNA. There's a reason why we have so many surf shops and surf equipment and action sports equipment stores here, because people are, that's part of what we do here. So I think that it's kind of a natural in terms of how we can participate in sports tourism, but there are other ways, too. But I've heard about lots of city-owned facilities that are in need of renovation and repair, including the Sports Plex, and I don't know whether or not specifically that also includes like the field hockey facility that's near there. I know the Hampton Roads, the soccer is another one that is looking to improve and expand. How does that fit in to the, to your discussions about, I mean, I think probably if we, I've been to the sports center and I've seen the cracks in the concrete. I don't know if there's structural concerns, but I've seen the disrepair that it's in in some areas. And so it's challenging for me to think about building a whole new center when we're not really taking care to the greatest extent possible of what we have. So how do you strike that balance?
Yeah, I think for the Sports Plex, I think that's, that's city-owned but operated by another group, and that's separate from the sports center. And the council over the years has appropriated the C I P, and they've been working on addressing some of the maintenance concerns, and significant dollars have been used towards plusing that up to get it into a state of better repair, right? And more money is still in the current C I P and appropriated to do future work there as well. There's been, there's been an ask of that operator that council authorized us, so we're getting ready to finalize a bid process to see what that operations look like in terms of management, because the contract, I think, is getting close to expiration, where council wants to see what the operations look like to think about a future investment and enhancements. And I think the operator's been asking for some turf help there as well. But for the actual structural maintenance and repairs, council over several years of appropriated funds and works being done to put that into a state of good repair. The other aspects I think you've heard is from the Hampton Road Soccer Group, and that's a city-owned land, but the building, the facility is owned by and operated by the Hampton Road Soccer folks. And I think they're, they have an ask of city support for building out a turf there as well. So those things could be a part of this conversation, right? So I think that it's a three, it's a two-pronged act. It's one is, are there any of these three new expansion opportunities that council feels that we should expand out and study further? And these other opportunities, does council want us to use these dollars to help enhance the fields, the turfs, as requested by some of the operators that are currently in the city?
Chris, Amelia, and then Barbara.
Thank you, Nancy. I've had to pull up the Victus study to get a little bit more context, but I wanted to start with the number one action indoor sports. So we have, because it's a wish, you know, some of these are, it's a wish list, but we have ECSC, just finished, I think, 61st year. That includes surfing and skating and other things. So that's on the plate. Jackalope, what were we in this year, 1.25 million? What was the, Mr. Manager, 1 million? Three-year commitment, one-year commitment, three years. So we're looking at doing that. We hosted our first one, we invested money there. Bull riding, many people don't look at it, but it's an action sport. I wouldn't want to hop on one of those bulls, but we brought them to the beach, so check. And then just a few weeks ago, we appropriated, I think, $125,000 to Coastal Edge D for the citywide skateboarding. So I mean, I don't know how much more, I mean, that's seems like a pretty good commitment that we've made to action sports. When you go to the survey, because I think it's important, when we pull up where athletes are spending their time, it says that soccer, swimming, and this is sports community survey, if anyone's reading online, soccer, swimming, basketball, and baseball were the sports that survey respondents were most involved with in Virginia Beach. So I think about prioritizing. So we know we don't have those fields we could bring in Cal Ripken, there's a host of other tournaments. I know this says just summer. I live across the street from Manhattan Baseball Field. I asked my wife if the lights are only on during the summer, and she'll let you know it's year-round.
I chatted up with you as well.
Baseball.
I think softball and spring ball.
So they're playing year-round. It says the Virginia Beach Fieldhouse and the Hampton Road Soccer Complex were cited as the facilities most visited in Virginia Beach. So you look at, if we're going to prioritize investing in what we already have, that's low-hanging fruit. Soccer was identified as the most established sport in Virginia Beach. Cox F C, Councilman Remick, state champions, continued on. Field hockey, we looked at this year, Councilwoman Amelia Ross-Hammond, you visited that complex and saw the impact field hockey is having on room nights and soccer. And then I wanted to read part of the SWOT analysis, because I think that's important. When we look at what we're going to do for these facilities or sports, one of the main complaints was the collaboration with the hotels. And that's not a knock on the resort community, but if you look at the sports centers, some of the challenges we're having right now with the bookings, it's very hard to get double rooms in the summertime. And so that's another challenge that I would love to look at. So I like the list, but I think we've put millions of dollars into action sports. We could do more. Outdoor baseball, I mean, if you poll the people, you know, Great Neck Baseball, Cox Baseball, F C Baseball, Kempfield Baseball, Kellum, I mean, we've got state champions around the table. And so, I mean, I would love to prioritize, but just to throw the list out and say action indoor is number one. I mean, we've put a lot of money into action indoor just this year. So hopefully, we can review this study in depth, because I think there's a lot of important information right there that the people told us what they wanted to prioritize.
Just to clarify, this staff is not rank-ordering it?
I think the staff is asking council, are they any of you who want to focus more time on?
For action sports, it's not necessarily events and programs. The feasibility study would be to do an actual action sports facility, not necessarily to do more programs. But we're not asking, we're not rank-ordering it. I think we're just asking council, from that study that was done, is there any new opportunities that you want us to do a feasibility study on to see if it makes sense for a future investment? And also, on the current facilities, do you want us to focus there as well, right?
Okay, Barbara. Amelia, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was just mentioning, and Chris did bring up the soccer, the field hockey, and some of them have done their own little study that they have, and I've asked for a presentation from the soccer. So we won't need to reinvent the wheel on something like that.
That's great, yes, absolutely. I think that all data, that's really what I was here to discuss today is, is trying to establish a path forward. So whatever directions given today is how we'll get to work, and I agree with you, the soccer complex is a great place to.
And they have a presentation, so similar to what Barbara mentioned, if they come up, so we see their presentation and we can learn on what, because they felt kind of disappointed. I won't go through that whole story, but giving them that opportunity, because they connect sand soccer with that as well, and that's big.
Yes.
And it's international. You go down at the oceanfront and see people from all walks of life.
Yes.
Okay, Barbara, and then Worth.
Well, I'll just say that sports tourism is important for Virginia Beach, and it didn't just happen. It happened because city councils have made it a priority, and that's why it is where it is, and we just need to keep that going, particularly with amateur sports. I think that's important, because it also includes our own citizens as well as our visitors. And so this whole concept of sports activities is critical or is valuable for not only the tourism, but for our own citizens. And I just look at these partnerships that we have created, because we didn't do it just with the city. That's why we do have these nonprofits working with us, and it's partnerships, and it's because it's partnerships that we need to hear from them next before we turn somebody else loose in deciding what we should do. I don't know. They know, and I would really like to hear from them before we take the next step.
Okay, Worth.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, thank you, Ms. Hellman, and I can't agree with everyone anymore. Sports in Virginia Beach, it's really authentic to our city. One of the reasons why I moved here, everything is outside, everything can be inside as well. But we have so many sports, so I do think we need to prioritize. And soccer, for example, they do need $175,000 to move forward with plans, site plan, and approval for their fields, the turfing of two fields, as well as potential expansion into the amphitheater parking lot. But also, the PAC needs money. Our existing facilities, as has been pointed out, do need attention. So I would, I would go in that direction and not get too many diverted with too many new ventures. But field hockey, I want to make a play for field hockey that's authentic to this city as well. We used to have the U.S. National Headquarters of Field Hockey Training Facility, so it would be great to get that back if we could, but anyhow. But it also plays into tourism. It's for our own citizens, but it's tourism, and I believe the money does come from tip. Some of this does. I wanted to remind everyone of that.
Josh and then Jen.
And thank prior councils for everything, because you have done a lot to prepare the table for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I couldn't agree more with what's been said around me. You know, and I recall as part of the Victus study, they called out the fact that the quality of the facilities were what, were the driver of, you know, visitors. And, you know, we have, we're very fortunate with, you know, with prior councils having prioritized, you know, the wonderful facilities that we do have, but those facilities are now in need of reinvestment. And when you look at, you know, overall benefits of the economy and encouraging sports tourism as a tourism driver, but, you know, family sports, you know, people, people will go at great lengths to, not family sports, but team sports that drive families to bring their, you know, their youngsters places, and people will spend whatever, whatever they can to make that happen for their children, and that drives, you know, tourism spending and people spending nights in hotel rooms. So, so I think team sports is, should be, should be a priority for us. I think reinvesting in existing facilities should be a priority for us. And, and I am supportive of the Hampton Road Soccer Complex's ask to put, to put their ducks in a row, to get the, you know, the facility redesigned. And, and I believe another thing in the Victus study was a major weakness of ours was lack of lit rectangular fields and turf fields. So, and Hampton Road Soccer Complex has never come to us with an ask, and I think, you know, if we could focus the majority of this on reinvestment and enhancing what we have and maybe saving a little bit on the side for, you know, something new, something small, but just to try something out, then that would, that would be fine, too.
Okay, Jen.
Just to add as a recent example, the Hampton Road Soccer Complex this past weekend hosted the 2023 International Super Cup, and there were kid leagues, women leagues, male leagues, and the players were a mix of amateurs and also former professional soccer players. And my husband and I went there over the weekend, and it was 9:00 PM, and it was the final game, I don't know soccer language, but the final match, and it was incredible the number of attendees and the energy, and they flew in an announcer from Honduras to, they were live streaming all over the world. So they were, the world was watching the Virginia Beach Hampton Road Soccer Complex. It was a fiesta, it was a party, and one of the, they were grateful to have played there. The competitors were a team from Richmond and a team from Maryland who competed right here in Virginia Beach, stayed over the weekend, stayed at the hotels, you know, so we have all this international and regional attention. And the organizer for that event said, you know, she was really grateful, and then she, we were looking at the layout, and she was like, there aren't stands. So you've got something of this size where we really have an opportunity to highlight our sports industry on an international level and concede the folks who wanted to, so that, you know, people brought chairs, or they were standing along the fence, but we really could do a better job investing in these things that are already driving tourism to our area. I want to shout out those players and that organization for a great event this past weekend.
Absolutely.
Amelia, then Drew.
I do have one group. We have some very active seniors. And you keep hearing, what about us? Or they speak up all whatever they're doing. But we have a group of active seniors that we need to, you know, address that in some way.
Maybe that's part of the next step.
That's part of the next step, and I'm sure we've addressed some of those for the disabled. We do have like the, out at the beach, that little spot, and some out near, where is it, off General Booth, back there from the gentleman. But the seniors, they would like to see more, they would like to see, you know, more adaptable, they called it something else, but they want something. And young people like me, you know, we want to see that.
Great, thank you.
So, sorry, Ms. Mayor, just wanted to chime in really quickly. One anecdote I can share with you, since you had mentioned Councilwoman Rouse on soccer, was when I, when I attended the soccer championships on the beach last year, had the privilege of meeting both the men and women's head coach, and I asked them, you know, what, what, what would, what would really up the game in Virginia Beach, you know, because people really know us for sand soccer here. And we have some really amazing athletes that come out of Virginia Beach who play sand soccer, and they both said to me that having a full-time sand soccer goal on the beach would be something that would be really very unique, and it would increase the talent level coming out of here. And anyway, I just want to throw that out there, that it was something that was interesting, but both coaches said, said that to me. And, and, you know, when we reinvest in facilities like these, I mean, we always try and, you know, obviously balance the needs of our visitors and those of our residents. This is, this is a win-win, you know, because there are lots of people in Virginia Beach who play baseball and soccer and go down and, you know, help, you know, put their kids through college with a, say, a field hockey scholarship. Those are, those are really important to parents here, but they're also, and I've said it before at this table, it's an ama, it's an amazing thing to drive through the parking lot and see all the license plates from other, other states that come and bring their children here, so.
Yep, Michael.
Thanks, Mayor. I'm just hearing a lot about, you know, soccer, baseball, organized sports, and I support all of that. I think it's great. I just want, I don't want there to be any, any lack of clarity around my view of the importance of what they call action sports, the BMX, the skating. The other thing is, and I have to, I haven't done a as deep a dive as apparently Mr. Taylor appears to have on terms of the Victus study, but not all skateboarders and BMX riders participate in studies like that. So I think it's possible that they've been underrepresented as part of that study. And, and the parental guardian mentor structure around those sports is very, very strong, and people also travel for those sports, and it is part of authentic Virginia Beach. All you have to do is look at the Mount Trashmore Park, the beautiful Mount Trashmore Park that we've, are celebrating the 50th anniversary of this year, and see the skate park there, the iconic half-pipe that's at Mount Trashmore Park that's produced incredible athletes and skateboarders and BMX riders and for many, many, many years. So I want to make sure that everybody's on the same page, that that's part of it, too, in addition to the other more participatory sports. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, that was a great discussion. Yep, Patrick.
I think where, where I'm hearing council land on is focus on reinvestment opportunities to make the infrastructure and the program, the facilities we have, better. So of the dollars that we have of sports tourism, let's look at things like the Sports Plex, the PAC, and the Hampton Road Soccer Facility as a way to make those revitalize and better, right?
I think that's basically, you know, and then once we get that squared away, you know, we can probably get a, you know, a little bit more of a future vision, but improve what we have. You know, it's like you said, people come here because they love the aesthetics and the quality of the places, you know, so we got to, you know, make that. And, you know, and just in closing, you know, I think it's important whether, you know, whether we like it or not, you know, this region is just not, you know, a lot of people suitable to a truly big sports franchise. But what do we have? We have the ability, you know, to come here. We're congested cul-de-sac, you know, in a lot of ways that, you know, prohibits certain things. But what do we have? But what do we have? We have a destination where people like to come. And the, the thing is, as, what you're effectively doing is making us into a year-round destination. We don't have, hopefully, we get rid of the shoulder seasons, and we don't have to deal with that anymore. You know, a couple of weeks ago, my wife and I went to an event at the Oceanfront. It was a lifeguard competition. You have lifeguards here from all over the country. And Mike, you, what a magnificent display of athleticism and, you know, just camaraderie. And just this last Friday, I was at the Sports Center, there was a Filipino event. They had people from Toronto to Tampa and from Las Vegas to New York, 1,500 youth participants with their families. And, you know, this, you know, this is, we are on, definitely on the right path in a lot of ways. And once again, it's, you know, the impact that we're having and filling, you know, it's making our economy better and making life better for everybody. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, at the request of several members of council, LJ Hanson is going to provide counsel with a brief update on the 21st Street Library, and also get us, try to seek a sense of direction from the body as it relates to how would you like us to handle the facility going forward.
Hey, how you doing?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. It's my pleasure this afternoon to give an update on the disposition of the 22nd Street Library. Some folks call it the 21st Street Library, although I don't understand it because it's not on 21st Street. You'll also be happy to know that for me, this is a very short slide deck, so I'll try not to take up all your afternoon. Well.
That's not what you always tell me, Patrick.
So a little background, the, the city had been approached by an interested party on the former library site. They're interested in the property, less so in the building, but they did make some inquiries as to the condition of the, of the building itself. The facility is currently sitting in an underutilized condition. That is, it's, it's really not occupied. We use it mostly for storage at this point. And, and staff, really, the purpose of this meeting is to inquire what City Council's direction is, if, if there's any interest at all in pursuing some type of, of an action as it relates to the property or the building itself. And a little bit of the history of the, of the facility. Constructed in 1927 by the Chesapeake and Potomac Telephone Company, it was originally one of those buildings that maybe our parents might have thought of, you know, with the, the folks that had the, the push, the, you know, pulling the pins out and put them in the other one, connecting, you know. That, that, obviously, that technology didn't last a number of years, but the building itself was expanded twice in the 1940s as a result of the growing community around it. However, with the changes in technology, that building would cease to be used in 1958. From 1959 to 1978, it was used as the Virginia Beach Princess Anne County Library, and it was expanded in the 1960s. And after that point, it's been used for a number of purposes. I was actually told that it was used as a clinic at one time, and I don't, I don't think that a lot of people know that, but there was definitely some additions that were done, and, and some of that was used for that purpose. At this point, as I mentioned, we're using it predominantly for storage at this point. So the box in yellow indicates where the library is located on the block, and you can see it, it's, the block is bordered by Pacific, Arctic, 21st and 22nd Street. The area in yellow is the property, the building that we're discussing is located inside that. And a close-up of that, a close-up of that shows exactly how small that piece of property is relative to the size of the building. You can see that on the back of the parcel, there's two cars, and that should give you some idea about how much space exists. There's enough room along one side for a drive aisle and really pretty much parking for three, maybe four cars, if you were really creative, not taking up the drive aisle. The facility itself is, it's very small. It, it, it's about, well, at least the lot itself is very small. The facility is being maintained, but it does have some issues that are, that are minor in nature, but it has heat, air conditioning, has water. It, it is potentially able to be utilized, but it's been, it's sat vacant for a long time, so it does have some musty smells and that type of thing. It would, it would require a significant amount of work to put it to a, to a new purpose. The other thing that's important to note about how this building is constructed is that it was built on a basement foundation. And that's, that's relevant if we talk about the potential to relocate the facility. That would be a lot harder to do than if it was built on a slab or if it was built on a, on a foundation with a typical footer. It's also worth pointing out, as I mentioned, that it was expanded twice in the 40s, expanded again in the 60s. So the original building has been modified a number of times. And so that also would create for some difficulties if it was to try to be relocated. Not to say that it couldn't be, just that it would make it much more expensive. The basement that I mentioned about is currently closed off. It has the presence of significant amount of asbestos-containing materials. It does not represent a threat to anybody, I want to emphasize that, but we don't allow people to go down into the basement without protective equipment. Just a couple of photos, exterior photos from the front, from the side, that's the drive aisle in the center, and then on the other side, you can see how close it is to the property boundary. And some interior photos, I mentioned, it's mostly being utilized for storage. You can see, again, it has carpeting, you know, the, the walls are in decent shape. The plumbing is all there, the lights work. In general, it's, we're just using it for storage because, in all honesty, it doesn't suit the needs for some of the other things that we would want to use. And parking, parking would be an issue for most public uses, and, and for that reason, it's really suited for what, I mean, at, at this point, we're using it for probably about the, the most suitable use. And then the last slide I have here is, is really the, the crux of the matter, is what would City Council like to entertain at this point, if anything? Does City Council desire that we entertain any offers, offers on the property? And I, I know that traditionally with properties like this, the, the question might be, well, would it be appropriate to put it out to an RFP? If we were to put it out to an RFP, I think we'd have to talk about what are some of the stipulations we would want to put in that RFP so that we, that we knew what we were getting back, at least something from the right starting point. Would it be important, I, I would like to know if City Council would think it's important to preserve the building, if they would be open, if you all would be open to relocating the building, and if there's any other special requirements that, that you would really like to see in any type of an RFP, if that's something that, that you desire to move forward with. And I mentioned this is a, a short slide deck for me, and that's it. That's all I have, so.
Rosemary.
Thank you, LJ, and thank you for meeting Councilman Remick and I out there. We had a lovely tour, and I was surprised. And it was, I really thought it was going to be worse than it was. I mean, I've, I've seen buildings that had to be totally renovated and like the, I think Michael is, is it 525? The old Kempsville junior building in your district?
Yes, it is.
Oh, that one was disastrous, but look how beautiful it turned out. It used to be in your district. And I don't know if you ever saw how bad it was when it started. It was, it was horrible, and it's totally beautiful now, and people really are glad that it was saved.
Pope was the builder? Pope, Jack Pope?
Yes, Jack Pope did that. He did, he did a wonderful job. There's really not many buildings, historic buildings, that, that we can control their destiny in our city. This is one of the few, and it's in the old village of Virginia Beach, was this kind of pretty cool before we became, it was a part of Prince Anne County before we became the big city of Virginia Beach. And I, I think on the outside, it's, it's a particularly lovely exterior with the ediments and the, the way that it was, the look. I know parking is an issue, but for me, I think people could, someone could take off all those additions off the back because they're not part of the original structure. They're not really much of a historic nature, and that could provide quite a bit more parking, probably maybe eight, at least eight spots.
Kathy, would you go back to the slide where it has history, and I, I think the space is shown? You can see in this slide that, that if that area in brown, which is the single-story addition, were to come off, you would have, you would have more parking. But if you go back to the one that has the, the square footage, I think it's the second, third slide. So in, in the area over, that's superimposed, in, you can see about how many square feet it has and how much space has been added. You know, were you to take off the, the area on the back, you'd gain about 300 square feet.
So for me, the, the value is in the original part of the building. And I've also been contacted, you know, by someone that was very interested in totally refurbishing the building and turning it off space, which I think it would make a beautiful office building. But we don't know what's out there until we would put out an RFP and see what kind of other ideas that might come forward. But adaptive reuse is just, you know, a wonderful thing. The Masonic Temple down at the Oceanfront was totally gutted and redone, and it's flourishing and, and doing really well. It's turned out to be a beautiful building, and I, I think this could be something really special. There's been a few times that we've lost some buildings, that our citizens, the old post office on 24th Street, which we didn't own, the federal government did, and it's, it's now a drugstore. People were very upset when that was lost, but we had nothing we could, you know, do to save that one. But this is something that we could. So I, I personally would like to see a RFP put out where they would save the original part of the building. You know, they could tear off the old part. If they could, if somebody wants to try to relocate, I think you're right, it would be really, really difficult, but certainly open to relocation. And I, I just think there's a whole lot of different things that could be done. And if you think about it, that's on the major thoroughfare as you exit our city, 21st Street, you, you enter and 22nd as you go out. But I also wanted to remind everybody that the Historic Preservation Commission, they have asked us to repurpose this building. So let's, I think we could go fishing and see what, what comes out. We might be surprised at some of the good ideas that people might have.
Anybody else for it?
Nice, Mayor, thank you, I agree with you. Can you just repeat? The Historical Preservation Commission has asked us to keep. Repurpose, okay.
And they're not asking us for it to turn into a museum. I mean, you know, that's a lot of tax dollars, and, you know, you can't have it in some of the museums, but to repurpose it.
So I concur. I think we should go for an RFP to preserve the existing building, and the market can dictate what the price is. I think, Ms. Hanson, thank you also for your presentation and for the tour. I agree, the building is in better shape on the inside than I expected. However, I am aware of the cost to renovate this property. Some estimates are over $1.5 million for a 2,400 square foot building, which are, which is expensive, but it could be worth it. I don't know, but the market will bring, but this is, I grew up in a house that was built in 1790. I mean, I, I love history as well, and we have to preserve it in this, the state of Virginia, but it's also at the entrance and the exit to the resort. And so how it can fit into the rest of the resort, that block and specifically, or the rest of the resort, is also important. So I think we need to take that into account, but we'll see what the market says on the, on the value and, and the use.
Anyone else? Anybody object to moving forward with an RFP? Patrick?
If it's not illegal, I'd never object, counsel. So I think the question I have, as we get ready to, to scope this RFP, is it just a standalone building, or can this be part of, is it okay to let the market know that it could be part of some kind of other overall site-wide or multiple-site-wide development process in that area? Or is it just the, the, the building envelope that we're trying to do as part of the RFP?
I think we need to be open to all ideas. However, they, they need to preserve the integrity of the historicness of his, the historic nature of this building and not hide it either. It needs to be available.
Yeah, so it could be that if a respondent was to respond, they could incorporate the building structure, assets on the site, but incorporate it in some other kind of development if they're able, able to get site control of, of other properties around it.
And I think it all depends on how it all blends together, you know? I don't think we want to have something that looks like a sore thumb sticking out.
Chris and then Barbara. Any of the other adjacent lots, or is it just this piece?
We do not. In, in fact, even the alley that's behind it is not, is not controlled by the city.
Thank you. Okay, Barbara.
Well, as what Rosemary was talking about, would be similar to what was done with the Hickman House Brown's Tavern. I mean, they relocated it, but relocated it on the same site, but on the corner, and then developed around it. And I think that, that looks very nice. Because that was all privately done, it wasn't publicly. That would be a, an example, and that, I was thinking this might be difficult to relocate in brick, but that, that was brick, so they were able to do it, so.
It's the basement that's the problem.
Yeah, well, it would be.
Hey, Josh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And yeah, just to chime in on relocation, I know something that I heard from members of the Historic Preservation Commission is, is that relocating the building to another site, you lose some of the, well, you lose a historic value of the, of the, of the site when you, when you do that. So I'm also in favor of, you know, trying to solicit some responses in, in terms of adaptive use, and if it, if it means incorporating it into a, a larger, larger development, you know, along, along the block, then so be it. I, I think that, I think we do have to look at that block kind of as a whole, too. I mean, because you don't want something, you know, I think of like the Shanghai holdout where you've got tall buildings and then the one person, yeah, so we don't want that. But, but something that would be complementary to the adjacent uses would be great.
Anyone else? Hey, we have a direction, okay? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time is for your last briefing. Staff will give a pending planning items update for items that you'll be taking up for consideration for a vote at your next upcoming voting meetings.
Welcome.
Good afternoon. All right, good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council. I am here this afternoon to provide a brief overview of the planning items on your agenda for tonight's meeting, as well as those on September 19th. So there are a total of six items on your agenda for the, for tonight's meeting. However, I will note that the applicant for the items one and two have, has requested a withdrawal of the applications in order to consider other design alternatives, so that will be brought back as a new application in the future, should the applicant desire to do so. And any future submittal of that application would require to go back through the planning commission process prior to coming back to City Council. And so you can just kind of go through these slides, Kathy. All right, item three is a conditional use permit request for a bulk storage yard at 130 London Bridge Road. More specifically, the applicant is proposing to operate a temporary lay-down yard to support the construction of Dominion Energy's offshore wind project. According to the applicant, the lay-down yard will be used for approximately three to five years. As such, staff has conditioned approval of the conditional use permit to three years with the option of two one-year extensions. Access to the site is from an existing access point along London Bridge Road. As conditioned, that access would be limited to write-in, write-out movements only. While bulk storage yards typically require, are required to be screened with a privacy fence and landscaping, the applicant has requested a deviation to allow just a privacy fence along London Bridge Road. Due to the temporary nature of the use, as well as the existing landscaping along three sides of the site, staff is supportive of that request. Due to concerns with potential crime and recurrence of the homeless encampments at the site, the police department has requested a the site, the police department has requested a delay of the installation of that fence until a time that the police department and planning department think is fit, which staff is supportive of. A site plan was recently approved for a, the development of an office warehouse complex on the site, and it's staff understanding that upon the expiration of the conditional use permit request, that construction would commence. Staff has not received any opposition to the request and the planning commission did vote unanimously in favor of the application. Items four and five include a modification of conditions requests for a religious use and a conditional use permit for a car wash facility for property located at the corner of Centerville Turnpike and Kempsville Road. The property, property is currently owned by Atlantic Shores Baptist Church, who intends to sell approximately two acres of the property and thus needs to remove that portion from the existing conditional use permit for the religious use. The intended purchaser intends to develop a 3,600 square foot, single automated car wash facility on the site, and that requires the conditional use permit within the B2 district. Access to the parcel will be from a private driveway on the church property that runs from Kempsville Road to Centerville Turnpike. Since the site is located within the Centerville SGA, a reduced front yard setback is proposed from 35 feet to 10 feet to align with the design guidelines for the urban areas to pull the building closer to the street and locate parking within the rear. The building elevations depict a one-story building, which at its tallest point is 21 feet and seven inches. And then as you can see here, the design will be similar to what is shown on the slide. The proposed hours of operation for the car wash will be 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM daily. Staff has not received any opposition to the request and the planning commission did vote in favor of the item at their August hearing. The final item for consideration on the, this evening's agenda is a conditional use permit request for an automobile repair garage at 212 Dorset Avenue. More specifically, the applicant intends to operate a repair garage specifically for motorcycle maintenance, bodywork, and customizations. All work will be done within the inside of the existing building on site. Staff has not received any opposition and the planning commission also voted in favor of this item. Moving on to your September 19th agenda, there are a total of 10 planning items for consideration. Item one is a request for a modification of conditions to a 1966 conditional use permit for a religious use for property located at the corner of North Great Neck Road and Millwood Road. Similar to the previous modification request, the church, which has existed on the property since the 1960s, intends to sell a portion of the property that is no longer needed for church use. More specifically, the church intends to sell an approximately 3.8 acre portion of the property and thus again needs to remove that portion from the modification, or from the initial conditional use permit request for the religious use. The church will retain just over four acres, which does exceed the three-acre minimum lot size requirement found in the zoning ordinance. Staff has received 36 letters of opposition to the request and 18 speakers spoke in opposition at the planning commission hearing. They were noting concerns with the future development of the property to be sold, specifically with regards to environmental impacts. Since the modification request meets the conditions of the original CUP and still satisfies the dimensional requirements of the zoning ordinance, staff did recommend support of the application. However, the planning commission did vote six to four to recommend denial. Item two is a conditional use permit request for a car wash facility located at 6213 Indian River Road. The applicant intends to construct a single tunnel car wash facility on the B2 zoned parcel, including 20 single turbine vacuum stations. Access to the site will be via an existing access point on Indian River Road. While there is an existing access on Old Providence Road, that will be restricted to emergency access only. Due to the existing residential neighborhood to the west, staff did work with the applicant to locate all of those vacuum stations at the bottom part of the site away from the residential and has conditioned that dumpster service be limited to between the hours of 8:00 AM and 6:00 PM. Additionally, a privacy fence and landscaping is proposed along that entire property line adjacent to the residential properties. The proposed hours of operation are 7:30 AM to 8 o'clock PM daily in the spring, summer, and fall, and then 7:30 AM to 7:00 PM in the winter. Staff has not received any opposition to the request and the planning commission voted unanimously in favor of the application. Item three is a conditional use permit request for a family daycare home at 40, 5408 Larissa Court. The applicant currently operates a by right daycare facility at her home with up to four children, and she now wishes to increase the number of children to six, which is what requires the conditional use permit. A neighbor did speak in opposition to the request at the planning commission hearing, noting concerns about traffic congestion in the cul-de-sac as well as noise generated from the increase in children. To address these concerns, staff has conditioned that pickup and drop off be staggered to prevent congestion within that cul-de-sac. And then the planning commission did revise the maximum number of children allowed from 12 to six to address those concerns. And with those revised conditions, the planning commission did vote in favor of the request. Item four is a CUP for a short-term rental at 907 Pacific Avenue, specifically for a one-bedroom unit within the Pacific Place condominiums. The property has not been previously used as a short-term rental in the past and is able to meet all STR regulations within the zoning ordinance. As Pacific Place condominiums is one of those properties that has been granted a historical exception for parking, they only have to provide one parking space, which they are able to accommodate on site. Staff has not received any opposition to the request. We've kind of updated this map a little bit, so this shows the number of STR permits that have been approved within the area. So as you can see here, there are a total of 22, and that includes the 13 previous approvals within the Pacific Place condominiums specifically. And planning commission did vote in favor of the application at their August hearing. Items five and six are two additional STR requests, both within the Pacific Place condominiums. Each are another one-bedroom unit within the condominiums. Neither have been used previously as an STR and are able to comply with the STR regulations and the zoning ordinance. And again, they are only, are required to provide one parking place per unit, both of which are accommodated on site. And again, staff has not received any opposition to the request, and the planning commission did vote in favor of both applications. All right, items seven and eight are two additional CUP requests for short-term rentals at 422nd Street and 2106 Arctic Avenue. This applicant was before you at your August hearing for the, for an STR on the adjacent property. This request is for two existing four-bedroom dwellings, neither of which have been used previously as STRs and both of which are able to comply with the regulations in the zoning ordinance. A total of four off-street parking spaces are required per dwelling and can be accommodated on site. I will note that there, four of those spaces do encroach into the Arctic Avenue right-of-way. However, none of those spaces do impede either traffic flow or block the existing sidewalk, which does comply with the zoning ordinance, which does allow for encroachment into the right-of-way as long as you don't impede vehicular or pedestrian traffic. Staff did receive one letter of opposition to the request, just noting general concerns with the number of STRs within the area. And then again, this map just shows you the number of approvals within the area, so you've got 107 within that larger box there. Planning commission did vote in favor of both applications at their August hearing. The last two items are ones that I know you are all familiar with, that they were deferred at the August 15th hearing to allow time for the applicant to secure a third off-site parking space. So as a reminder, this is a request for a three-bedroom condominium unit that is part of a larger quadplex building, has not previously been used as a short-term rental, and there are no known zoning violations on the site. Since your August 15th hearing, the applicant was successful in securing a third off-site parking space. This is just a couple blocks up on 20th Street and is within a quarter mile of the subject site. Two neighbors did submit letters of opposition to the request and spoke at the planning commission hearing back in May, noting concerns again with the number of STRs in the area and then general concerns with parking and enforcement. The planning commission, however, did vote unanimously in favor of the application at their May hearing. And again, this map here, you can see there are a total of 88 previous CUP for STRs approved in this area. Final application mirrors the one I just spoke about. So this is for 507 20th Street, 20th and a half Street, excuse me, and was deferred at your August 15th hearing. Again, this applicant was able to secure a third off-site parking space, just a couple blocks down on 20th Street. Same two letters of opposition were submitted by a neighbor who also spoke out against this application at the planning commission hearing. However, the planning commission again voted unanimously in favor of approval of the application. And I will stand by for any questions.
Any questions? Okay, thanks a bunch. Thank you. Okay, at this point, do we have any council liaison reports? None? Oh, okay.
Thank you, and I'll be brief. The last week in August, I attended the Virginia Beach Community Development Corporation board meeting and where the summary for the financial report for this past year was given. And for the second year in a row, this organization has had positive cash flow for the year this year, almost $50,000. I think the same was about last year. So this organization, BB CDC, which this council started in 1985, is currently working with NAMI on the site on Princess Anne Road to build almost 50 units as well as the corporate offices for NAMI there, thanks to you all's gracious gift there, as moving forward. But the other part that I learned the other night was there are three properties in Norfolk that council required this organization to sell as a part of the debt forgiveness, the loan a couple of years ago, and two of those three properties have transferred and the third one is about to close pretty soon. So this is a good story, continuing good story with BB CDC. Share this liaison with Councilman Berluci and I love this organization.
Anybody else? Barbara?
Well, we are getting the annual reports from our boards and commissions, and I think Terry has done such a great job in tracking those for us. But I know the committees that I'm liaison for have really taken this to heart, coming up with their annual report, and I think it's been very good for, for them as well as for us to know what they're doing. And I just really appreciate all the work that they have done to pull up these annual reports and identify their goals and what they've accomplished. And I think it's going to be a good, a good thing going forward that this is now being required. And I know Terry's worked real hard to get, get all that together.
Way to go, Terry. Josh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Councilwoman Henley, I'm glad you brought that up because contained in those annual reports are, are various recommendations for us to consider. And I was, I was, I was hoping that we might find some time and space to, to maybe collate those and, and consider them. And I, I don't know what, what kind of process that might entail, but since I did put out all that time and effort on these reports, I would, you know, just beyond us reading them individually, I think, I think it'd be good for us to, to take up some of these items that, that they've recommended that we consider.
Mayor?
And just what you're mentioning, Josh, for housing, remember they had to sit and look and kind of add other recommendations and so forth. That's a good idea. And I wanted to mention about Park After Dark. It was a great success rally, and we were, Councilwoman Rouse and myself were over there for the closing. And also, she is liaison for the public library, so they have this new story walk. How many pieces, 15 or?
Yeah, an entire length of the sidewalk, so that adjacent to the field and interactive story for families to read and participate and walk the walkway. Really nice.
So District 4 is shiny, having something like that as well as the Park After Dark. Thank you. Together for having the park.
Now, that's a great program. Anybody else for liaisons? Okay, I'll start off real quick because once again, I think, you know, we as a, a body, you know, are coming together, you know, through some challenging times and, you know, we're getting ready, you know, it, you know, the bittersweet reality that Rocky is going to be moving on to a position he is destined for, that, you know, we as a body at least begin to initiate some conversations. You know, we're not going to solve everything tonight, but Michael and I had a conversation over the weekend and then today, and I just thought in the interest of fairness, I should let Michael just present a few things. And, but once again, this will just kind of jumpstart, you know, some significant conversations that we will be having as a body. Michael?
Thank you, Mayor, and we did have a great conversation this weekend and also this morning about the upcoming vacancy presented by Councilman Holcomb, I think.
Yeah, Rocky?
I'm going to recuse myself for this. But don't, don't accuse yourself till you hear this part. I'm so sorry to see Councilman Holcomb leaving, but I'm happy, I'm happy for, for the new role that, that he will.
Can we give him a clap before he goes out? He's starting to chow on.
But we do have a conversation to have about the vacancy that his departure presents. And when you consider the facts around this vacancy, that he's vacating the seat on September 29th, and then the council would have up to 60 days to make an appointment, which still puts it within this year, the person who would be serving there would be serving for well over, for some, some period of time over a year, including during a budget cycle. And we've had a lot of changes in this city. We've had a new, we have a district system now where we all represent different constituencies. None of them are within District One except for the mayor, who represents at, at large. And given the length of the time, I thought we need to have a conversation about whether or not we should ask for a special election. And it's, and I had, took the time to speak to Mr. Stiles as well as to the voter registrar. And although complicated, a special election is technically and legally possible. It likely would occur in early January. So the body is going to have a policy decision to make about what is the most appropriate course, an, an appointment or an election. This is not new for me because many of you may recall that during the last legislative agenda process, I supported the request to have a special election as opposed to the appointment process where possible. We heard about some complexities related to the tech, the technical elements of that, and we need to sort through those. But it looks like we can have a special election. And given the length of this time, my view is that it's, we need to have a serious look at that, and, and I think we probably should call for a special election to fill this seat because, for all the reasons that I mentioned, but ultimately, it's the right thing to do.
Mark?
Just for everyone, so everyone is playing out of the same playbook here, the council is required within 15 days of a vacancy to ask the court to order a special election. The question is when that special election would occur? By default under the code, it typically goes, it happens at the time of the next general election, unless the next general election is too soon, which would be the case here. You couldn't, you couldn't do a special election in November with a vacancy that opens up at the end of September. So the next default under the, unless the council asks for a different date, would be the following November, November 24. But the code specifically authorizes the city council to ask for a date other than the next general election. And of course, the city has to pay for that, and the local electoral board and election staff have to be able to man and operate it. And so if you are contemplating a special election other than at the general election, I would recommend, and I think Mr. Berlucci has, has done this, that you reach out and consult with your electoral board and the voter registrar.
If I can just say this, you know, and, you know, the thing is historically over many years, you know, we have done placeholder appointments, but they were usually a couple months in duration. You know, I think in this case, we have a special circumstance that was described by Mark, that the next election would be more than a year away in terms of, you know, that that's what's going there. And, you know, so once again, I'm not sure that this is just me because trust me, I am an advocate of short-term appointments for placeholder- for placeholders. You know, I think a lot of people that may have come forward as a placeholder would not want to go through a full election. But that being said, I think we have something that we as a body, and we, the idea was just to get it on the table now, because this is obviously going to be a, a decision going forward. So at least begin to facilitate the discussion. Michael, did you have something? And then Barbara?
Well, there's another thing is first, you know, obviously, it's always preferable that the voters choose their own representative. And we have a duration of time here that allows that. We need to consult with the electoral board. I have exchanged emails with the registrar, and she told me it's technically possible. And we need to have a conversation about that. The other thing that is, it's always been said that it's cost prohibitive because it's expensive to have an election. And it is, I'm sure that it is, but worth it. This is our democracy. It's our rep, it's our representative government. And I can think of no greater expense than to allow the people to select their, elect their own representative. But the costs are different now because it's only one tenth of the cost. It's only one tenth of the city would be having a special election rather than a citywide race. So I think we need to think about that. But ultimately, I think this is just a fundamental part of, of, of our American democratic system. And to, and Mayor, I agree with you about short-term appointments. This just wouldn't be feasible to, for a couple of months. But we're not talking about a situation here where there's already filed candidates and it's just a few months. We're talking about well over a year. And I think the voters should have an opportunity to have their voice heard in, in who they elect and to represent them. And finally, I would say, as a person who's been appointed and who's ran an election and then a year later ran another election, public service isn't easy. Public service is a privilege. And to those people who say, I wouldn't do it if I didn't, if I had to run for it, well, then probably you're not cut out for it then. Because that is what we do in, in America in democratic representative government.
Hey, Barbara?
A question. Did you say that the election would not be able to be held until January?
I will defer to the voter registrar or to the member, the deputy. But there are limitations based on the fact that they have a general election to administer in November, and they have to lock up their poll books and materials for a minimum of 30 days and longer if there's a challenge.
My point is, then they, then District One is going to be over three months without having a representative.
That is correct.
I mean, it's, January is it, huh?
But, yeah. Yes, Mark?
Remember, your charter and the, the, the general statute.
Within six days.
Expect an appointment, an interim appointment until that special election can take place. Whether it's, whether it's, the special election is in 90 days, or whether the special election is in 14 months, the expectation under the charter and under the state code, and it's what every other jurisdiction does too, by the way, I, I, except for one in Virginia, you can fill that space, and you're called to fill that space till the general election, or till the special election is held and the winner is certified. So you would have the opportunity, and indeed, the charter says you shall make an interim appointment. Now, if we don't, I don't know anybody's going to do anything to you, but that's what the charter is.
I'm just trying to get all of these things straight because I know we had to have one within a certain number of days, or we had to make the appointment within 60, I think. So it seems like we've got some conflicting things here that we need to consider. We need to do all the pros and cons.
Yeah.
And let the public know all the pros and cons, too.
And that's the rationale about bringing it at least forward for preliminary discussion. Because once again, this is, you know, there, there's complicating factors out here that lend itself as to why would justify to placeholder in the past. Okay? But once again, you know, at least get, let's get it out on the table. And, you know, and now we'll, we'll be able to have a more robust discussion. We'll get the information from the legal point and from, you know, the voter and find out what we can do. Yes, Patrick?
The, the, just remember that within 15 days of the vacancy occurring, you have to petition the circuit court for the special election.
Right.
So you won't have a lot of time after that takes place. So now is, it is appropriate that you begin talking about it.
That, that was my rationale. Because, you know, Rocky's, you know, he's going to resign and gets sworn in probably within a few minutes. And, you know, that puts us on, once that happens, the clock is running. And that's why we're having the conversation. Michael, and then to Mayor.
Just to be sure we are all on the same page, I have a question for Mr. Stiles. Because what I understood from, well, let, let me just ask you, 60 days would be the date, would be the timeline to make an appointment. But if we identified a date conceivably in January where a special election could occur, a communication to the court that said, it's our preference for the reasons our, previously articulated to have a special election, and that the earliest date we could do it is in January, that's, wouldn't the court accept that? Or we certainly could ask them to accept that?
Let me, let me take you down into the weeds just a little bit. The charter says that the council shall make an appointment within 60 days. The Virginia Code section on point says the city council may make an election within 45 days. And if it doesn't do so, the judges of the circuit court may make the, may make the choice for you. I, I don't know what the court would do, but it's reasonable to think that the court would be receptive to the council's request. In, at the time, it says we're asking for a special election in, you know, about 90 days that they, that, you know, the, the court would have the discretion to make the appointment, but it would likely defer to you, I would guess.
Mayor?
Well, you've kind of answered, you know, some of what I was going to ask. Because if we're looking at 60 days as the ending of November, around that time for the 60 days, because if he's out the 29th, that's coming right up to October, October, November, that's 60 days. And if we do a special election in January, the only thing we'll be looking at then, if we have to make an appointment, they, they have a short window to serve. But looking at this goes all the way to December of 2024. Whoever's is serving for District One, which again, it wouldn't be a huge cost because it's only one district, I'm thinking that special election is important. I mean, we have a bunch of people already asking for that position. But do you want that person to serve all the way through? Or what? So those are discussions we as a body need to, to have.
Okay, Josh, and then Rosemary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I would just chime in. I know the point was made, but we, we obviously had a, a huge change in terms of our, our voting system recently. And, and I think if there was ever a time to use special elections as a means of making sure the citizens in whatever district, you know, comes a vacancy, that they have a voice and who represents them, I think, I think we, we have to do that. And, and like Councilman Berlucci says, I think it's the right thing to do. I don't think it's the right thing to do for this body to choose somebody to represent a district from where none of us reside. That is pretty much the exact opposite of fair, fair representation for, for that particular district. So I, I'm supportive of finding a way to make this work in a way that the Board of Elections and registrars comfortable with and, and doing the right thing.
Hey, Rosemary?
So I need some clarification because I'm.
Okay, Patrick?
No, no, no.
Okay.
I'm a little bit confused because you're saying it's okay to do a special election for a year, but short-term, better do an appointment. So where do we make that demarcation? What determines an election? And what determines an appointment?
Well, you know, that's, I think, the point of the discussion right here. You know, the thing is, I think we're looking at, if we're going to look at an appointment, that would be for a, you know, it was a potentially a 14-month, you know, duration. I don't consider that a placeholder at all. Okay? And, but the point being that, you know, the, a lot of our appointments that we've made have been several months in duration. And, yeah, but once again, that's why we're having the thing. This is a complicated issue. Mark, could I throw something?
And I want to finish.
Yeah, go right ahead.
I'm not finished. That was a question that I had. And I mean, it's, it's a real change in procedure of what we've been doing. All of, all of a sudden, we're jumping to something that we've never done before. But we also need to decide, if we go this route, I, I can understand a year is, is a long enough to do it. But at what point do you say, well, it's the short term? Is it, is it six months? Is it eight months? Is it three months? I think we need to think about what, what is considered short-term and what is considered, considered long-term?
You know, I agree. And, you know, once again, I think a complicating factor is that we never had, you know, a quote, potential appointment, you know, for a duration this long. And the other thing is, and can I put it this, Mark, could I ask you a question? Could we do, this may sound kind of weird, but, you know, we're in a, we're in new land here. Would, would then we might be compelled if we had to wait because we have a November election schedule, which we are not eligible to participate in. And therefore, you're going to take the Board of Elections X amount of time to clear the books and get ready. So we're looking at January. Is a possibility of, you know, a placeholder, you know, because Barbara brings up a point that would be a three-month thing. So, you know, once again, this is a preliminary conversation about a problem, no matter what we're going to have to confront.
Your petition to the circuit court is going to have to propose a date. If it doesn't propose a date, then by law, the court will set it for November 2024. And I think in terms of, I mean, I, I haven't gone back and looked, but I, I don't know, I don't know how long prior vacancies have been. I, I thought we had some that, that had been of a longer duration. But, but your ability to, to hold a special election is going to vary from vacancy to vacancy based upon the upcoming election schedule. So, and I don't mean to make it worse, but I, there's one other factor that you need to consider in this particular scenario. The state code also requires the, the, the local governing body, the council, to file a petition within 15 days of the vacancy in a constitutional office to request a special election. So you're going to have to also request a special election to fill the sheriff's position. Everyone had assumed, I believe, I don't, I don't want to say it that way. The, the assumption that I had heard was that that would be November of '24. That would be a citywide election, would be much more difficult for the Electoral Board and the registrar to conduct on short notice. But that's another factor. You're going to have two special elections here, not just your council seat. And this body has the obligation to request both of them. And your only voting meeting between the end of September and 15 days after the end of September is October 3? 2nd or 3rd? So I believe it's the 3rd of October. I believe it's the 3rd of October.
And folks, that's why I'm imposing the conversation tonight. So we don't have, or not back into a last minute, you know, kind of thing. We have, there's obviously a lot of moving parts that's going to go on with this scenario right here. And, you know, and Michael and I had a great conversation and, you know, it was back and forth. And, you know, there's multiple scenarios, multiple conditions out here. It's better to have the first conversation first and then, you know, get the information we need as a body to make a reasoned decision going forward. That's all we're, what we're asking for. Hey, anybody else? Council comments? Rosemary?
Before I start, um, finish up on this, I think we need to know the cost. If we're going to do a special election in January, we're going to have to propose both.
Sure.
All of a sudden, it's gone from one district, which is not going to cost very much, citywide. So we need that information.
I'm not suggesting they have to do them the same day. I was just telling you they both.
Well, it, we'll get criticized if we don't.
Yeah, but I'm telling.
If you're going to do one, you're going to have to do them both.
Yeah, if we get all the data points, you know, and stuff like that, then I think we can make a valued discussion. But, you know, my apologies, but I thought it would have merit to at least get the ball rolling tonight. Because this is something we're going to have to confront in a couple of weeks, whether we like it or not. So at least, you know, find that.
I do have a council comment.
Okay.
On council initiatives. Quite a while ago, I brought up that Oliver.
I'm not, I'm not leaving. There's too much confusion.
Okay. Glad you're here for this, Rocky.
He's on record. He's going to stay.
I, I brought up that having numbers of our districts was pretty cold, you know? I think they, they number prisons by just, by a number, or, you know, different things by a number, roads by numbers. And it's, how nice it would be if we could do like we did, we used to have names for our districts, or back in when we had boroughs. And now it's, we're pretty solid on moving forward with the, with the 10-1. Let's to, to think about names for our districts rather than just a number. And I think it's easier for people to remember as well, because I think they get confused with the numbers. I mean, we all know who we are, but some of.
We know where District One is.
Yes, we know where District One is. So we, we talked about it a while back. And now that the school is starting and we just kind of decided to do this, that maybe have a contest, name that district contest would be a fun thing to do. And it could involve school children and community groups. And then each council person could sort of be person that would be involved with their particular name your district contest. So I wanted to see if, at this point in time, now that we, we know we're going to have 10 districts, if we would be interested in, in doing a, a naming of the districts.
Any comments on this? Yep, Patrick?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Vice Mayor, I think this is one of the items that was being contemplated as part of the placemaking, conversation that came out of the focus action plan. Yeah, so we were already working towards getting that vetted out and spelled out. So this could fit in line with that path that council wanted us to go about. That could be one aspect of placemaking is trying to find a way to embrace or find names for the districts.
And if I could add too, you know, and this came up during, you know, a little bit, and Rosemary, I think it's a great idea. I think it's an outstanding idea. But what Michael was talking about during the retreat about the need of art, what if every district, like at a park or somewhere, had a very unique art sculpture? I've seen this, you know, in some other cities that really might have something generic and have, you know, some of our local artists, you know, submit ideas and put in. So now we've got a name, and then you've got a brand. Every district has a little piece of art they got and their own identity. You know, just a thought, you know, taking a good idea, maybe a little thought.
But I think it'll involve people and get more interested and engaged, which there's still some confusion out there. And I think this might help.
Okay. And then District One?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So real quickly, as a representative of District Six and most of the resort, but not all of it, but the resort, I remind everyone, is everyone's resort, not just District Six. This past couple of weeks, very active this summer as we, in the tourist season, East Coast Surfing Championship, Coastal Edge and the Virginia Beach J.C.'s put that on or co-sponsored that for Coastal Edge. They did a great job. This is the 61st year. And then last weekend, this past weekend, which is a beautiful weekend for weather, we had two road races put on by JNA Racing. we had two road races put on by J&amp;A Racing, sponsored by Chartway Federal. My colleague here is going to read something from Jerry Frostick here in a minute. But also, we've had some other events. Funk Fest was also E.C.S.C. weekend, and we had a lot of events put on by Beach Events this past weekend with bands. So it's very active still at the resort. We have the Shriners this weekend. We have Neptune Festival this month, and that, in September. So Councilman Taylor's going to read something from J&amp;A Racing.
All right. This is from the District, he's a District resident, but nonetheless, the race promoter. It was an honor for J&amp;A Racing to bring a large running event back to Labor Day weekend, allowing us to showcase all that we have, have here at the beach. It was an unbelievable weekend, and Virginia Beach rose to the occasion. All the comments we have received have been extremely positive, and people are already asking about reservations for next year. Amy and I love bringing the local feel back to this weekend, and I feel the whole community embraced welcoming our visitors to our beach. Also thanking, it is important for you to know that the city departments worked very well together to ensure that this event went off smoothly. The planning and communication with special events, police department, traffic, beach ops, fire rescue, VBMS, public utilities, and convention center was as good or better than it has ever been in the 22 years that we have been hosting events here. I know that in your position, you hear lots of negative comments, but you need to also hear the positivity that is created when Virginia Beach works together.
Oh, thank you. And I'll tell you what, Virginia Beach is back, and we are back strong. And the surfing competition got the, oh, the recognition for being the longest. Couple of years ago, we were the only surfing competition in the entire world that went on a couple of years ago. District 1.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, and to, to add the other side of the coin to, to that letter, which was, which was, it was awesome down there this weekend. I saw Councilmember Remick down there, and it was a, it was really nice at Oceanfront with everybody out running. But let me recall Thursday, August 24th. A large crowd showed up at Kemp's Field High on a beautiful Thursday evening to see the Chiefs host fourth-ranked Green Run in the football season opener for both teams, and the atmosphere was unbelievable. But the excitement of the game was lost when gunfire was heard in nearby neighborhood, and the game was halted in the fourth quarter. After a 45-minute delay, the game was then canceled. "It is very heartbreaking because kids on both teams worked so hard to get to this point," said Green Run Coach Brandon Williams, "and to have someone take it away from them that wasn't involved in the game, you know, that's a hard thing to take." Kemp's Field Coach Darryl Cherry also was stunned by the turn of events. So I had an after-action report of this, because there was about 20 law enforcement officers working at that game, and this is the first football game of the season. And here we already have three people that were shot. So I would implore to the citizens that if you know anybody who has an illegal firearm or is involved in nefarious activity, to call 1-88-Lock You Up. We have no place for this in our city. And, and when you go to interview people and nobody saw this, or nobody saw that, then they don't make good witnesses. No, that's unacceptable. We, as a community, have to step up and see, and, and when we see bad behavior, we have to tell the authorities. We can't hide it. We have to tell the authorities, and there's no way in a crowd that big at that football game that somebody didn't see something that can help us get these suspects in the shooting. So again, first football game of the year, and here we have a shooting. Three people injured. So unacceptable, and if you see this type of nefarious behavior, somebody with illegal weapons, report it to the authorities. 1-88-Lock You Up, because I can promise you that we represent much more than that as a city, and, and we deserve a lot better for our kids. And to hear this coach, this Green Run Coach, Brandon Williams, who, who has worked so hard to get his team where, where they are right now, and he says it's heartbreaking because the kids don't deserve it because of some foolishness in the, in the neighborhood. So I would say to anybody out there, if you see something, say something, make sure you report it, and let's make sure that these kids can enjoy these football games and these sporting events. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Very well said. Okay? Sabrina, and then Michael, then Jen.
Thank you, Mayor. Very important information, Councilmember Oakham. And I just remember a conversation not too long ago about shootings at schools in terms of the football games and the strategy that the police used to really deter this from happening. And so I'm very hopeful, you know, that with the public's input and the continued strategy of the police department, we will be able to address those concerns. I wanted to just really thank the staff, because the other night I was watching television, and to my surprise, I saw commercials about the rec centers in Virginia Beach, how great they are. And I saw not only one, but two, and they just really made me pause and smile about how well we're marketing the rec centers and the amenities that we have within our city. So just wanted to say thank you to the staff for doing that. When I see something like that, I always like to give certainly credit for that. The other issue really quick is, I think Councilmember Taylor brought it up before. It's fentanyl, and I received an email, as I'm sure you did, other council members did, about the fentanyl crisis that's continue, continuing to address our young adults. And that is an area that certainly want to look into and research more, and I have, you know, requested to see how we can make that legislative agenda item. And so I wanted to kind of make an example of something of that nature. Addressing something like that may not be a unanimous decision from the body, but it's very important. And so just wanted to make note and bring an example to the body that, you know, that's something that's very important to the community, and I would like to address that in the legislative agenda. I would like to get a unanimous or majority support for that, supermajority support for that, but if not, it still doesn't make that issue any less serious to be addressed in the legislative agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. It's okay. Let Jen go, and then you can finish.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just letting the community know that next Monday, September 9th, from 6 to 8, there's a District 10 Town Hall, and it'll take place at Green Run High School in the auditorium. So I'll, it's on the city calendar. I'll share it on my social media, but also want to make it aware here.
Say it.
Yeah, Monday, September 11th.
Say it.
Oh, thank you, September 11th. Thanks.
Okay. Michael?
Thank you. Well, that's a perfect segue, because I just wanted to make the community aware of the District 3 Community Meeting, which will be September 14th from 6 to 8 at the Philippine Cultural Center of Virginia. We're going to cover a variety of topics, including stormwater, public safety, mental health, waste management, and more. And also, a great opportunity for people to have their questions answered and their perspectives heard and considered by city staff and, and elected officials. So looking forward to that conversation, and I'll also post mine, have been on social media and elsewhere. Thanks.
Good. Chris?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor DiRico. Last week, we had the opportunity to cut the ribbon for the Great Neck Rec Indoor Pavilion, so wanted to thank Michael Kirschman, the entire staff, and the mayor for inviting me to that event. That was wonderful. It's going to be a great place, so if you have weddings or birthday parties, please look into booking that right at the rec center's beautiful facility, and they also redid the gazebo down at the water, so very nice. And then I'm working with our communications department. We heard a lot out of the retreat about cultural events, arts, and so Councilman Berluci has agreed to a, to support a culture-meets-commerce event that we're going to have in his district at Yen Diddy African Restaurant at the end of the month, so working on that. And it's going to be an opportunity for those from our community, whether they're creatives, artists, business people, to come and visit a, an organization or a venue that has a cultural background and bring commerce together. So I'm excited about that. Thank you.
And it's great to see the council members, you know, working together. It's, this is great. This is very, very good stuff. Okay, how about, oh, yeah.
Just have one second. If you talk a little bit about the gun barrel, that incident, and even though everyone did not get to go to the beach for all the beach events, the Mount Trash Mall was packed where people had picnics, and, you know, they're not at the beach, but that was a segue to see many of our citizens out there enjoying Labor Day, children, and it was a good. Talk about the gun.
Yeah, yeah, we had the pleasure of myself and, you know, Councilmembers Ross Hammond and Rouse and Worth, you know, had the pleasure of attending at Little Creek, and it was a barrel off the USS Iowa, which was in many, you know, battles that were very, extremely historic. But it was great to see, you know, whenever council members can get out, believe it or not, it really does make a difference. And, you know, it was deeply appreciated by, you know, the folks with, you know, with Worth and Jen and Amelia being there also, you know? And, you know, really, 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 really good turnout. And I'll tell you what, we, we have such a proud military history here, and it's just really phenomenal. Thank you. Okay, how about agenda review?
How about the agenda? So, council, we have a one speaker on three items tonight, and I'll point those out, and then we'll go back to everything else. Under ordinance and resolutions, there's one speaker, it's the same speaker on all three items, 24, and of course, that's recommended for indefinite deferral. And then the other items is under planning, L2 and L4, one speaker. So, anyway, going back, under the ordinance and resolutions, we know that 24 is recommended for indefinite deferral. Does anybody have any issues with the other items?
Barbara?
I just have a question on the second ordinance, the one about animals, and I know a lot of it has to do with dogs that are considered dangerous, but it also, you know, talks about other things with animals, and I'm certainly against cruelty to animals, but I don't know if the way this is worded might be a little bit too broad. You know, I represent an area of the city that has a lot of wild animals, and, you know, when it says that killing any animal is, is going to now be a misdemeanor unless you're hunting or whatnot, but I'm thinking of some of those instances, you know, like the coyote is killing your chickens, or you've got a rabid raccoon, and I, I just don't want this to be so overbroad that it causes people to get in a difficulty. It does say that if you unnecessarily kill, but who's going to decide that necessarily part? Is this broad and going to get, cause some problems for people who then have to explain to the court something that maybe?
I don't believe so. I believe that there are appropriate exceptions for, as you noted, for hunting and for other things, and I believe, I believe the killing of a coyote that was harming domestic animals would, would be included within that and certainly would be, quote unquote, reasonable. This, these changes were made largely based on the changes that were made to the state code in order to conform it with the new language employed by the state code. I can, we, we can look at that further and come back to you if there's, if there's a concern about that, but this was vetted by the police department, and I don't think there was any concern.
I think if some legislature. I understand has the word that if you feel threatened by an animal, then it's, you know, I'm thinking of a copperhead or something, you know? You don't want people, but, but feeling threatened, then you can take action. So I just want to make sure we're not doing something overbroad. If it's just conforming it to state code, then maybe we're, we're fine, but.
That was certainly the intent, was to conform it to the state code, and there were significantly changes made to the state code. And we worked over a period of several months with the PD to try to.
I'm pretty sure that this is not going to be an issue that's going to then be just used against people inordinately.
It's certainly not the intent.
Anyone else? Sabrina?
I'd like to set aside ordinance K1 mainly for some clarity towards the public, because certainly received some calls, and there were some concerns about moving the central absentee precinct with so close to early voting. I, I have certainly asked some questions about it, and I see that here in the information September of last year, the same type of move was done. And so the concern for people is making sure that this particular ordinance does not provide a, or provide or create any type of barrier or concern for absentee ballot voting, which on its face, it appears that it will not. However, as mentioned, there are some residents who want some clarity in terms of, is it going to affect early voting? Also, if we're moving that central absentee ballot location, will people still be able to go into Building 14 to use their absentee ballot vote? And will they have to.
Please go out there.
Find a new location? And so those areas have to be addressed so the public understands what's taking place, because it's not clear here in this item. The other thing I would say to, to note is, usually, we don't have a public hearing and a vote on the same day, just because as we agreed as a body, that's just something that we should not do. I understand in the interest of time is stated here that we have to do that, but it can provide a little bit of apprehension, and, and again, it's against our protocol. We normally don't do that, and so I just also want to just make sure we exercise some caution to that, especially when it gets so close to voting. Measures like this, I know we've done it before, but still, it can give the public and voters concern about moving precincts or moving, you know, in this case, the central absentee ballot location. So clarity, just asking for that here and in the public meeting, because there will be some people there who would like to have that clarity at that time as well.
And Sabrina, I will, at that time, also explain, as, you know, one of the folks that sets the agenda, you know, it was requested that we do these concurrently because of mandatory timelines that would be needed to expedite and implement the process, if I'm correct in saying that. But if you can address some women, council members' concerns.
Yes, I'm Christian Logan, the Deputy Director of Elections here at the city, and thank you all for having me here. The concerns here for the central absentee processing is just moving our mailing operation to Building 23 in order to process and store the absentee ballots that are returned by mail. The early in-person voting will still be held at Building 14. That does not change at all.
Okay. Yep, Jen?
Just for additional, additional.
Sure, sure.
So this move has no impact to voters in terms of where they're interacting with the registrar's office dropping off ballots? There's no, this move is only for Election Day counting?
This move is for the counting of the ballots that we send out prior to Election Day, and we get them returned prior to Election Day. We will also be processing from the 45 days beginning before the election until after Election Day at 23. So it will not affect any voters in any way as far as where they're going to drop ballots off or where they come to vote in person.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here.
Anybody else on ordinance and resolutions?
Going to plan, S H three, District.
In essence, District 7.
That one can sit.
Okay. Number two, we've got that one speaker. Three, speed years. Covington family. Covington Family Trust in SN District 4.
Yeah.
Number two is the actual withdrawal. Right, but we also had the one speaker on it.
Pull it then?
Well, we have, I thought we'd do the one speaker policy where they could come up and speak on the stage.
It will be full consent?
Yeah, well.
Do you want to pull it or on consent?
It's on consent for withdrawal.
Withdrawal. I just want to clarify.
Yeah, it's on consent withdrawal.
And will that speaker be speaking only to the matter of withdrawal and not to the merits of the act?
We'll let her know that it's been withdrawn.
I don't know.
And then number four, Lennon Bridge Development, and that is in District 6.
Pull that.
That's, that's on, all right.
And Vice Mayor, I'm sorry, one of the, for number one, is that being full or is, I just wanted to make sure.
Number one under planning?
Under ordinance and resolutions.
Oh, no, it's not being full. So just some questions.
Okay. And I guess everybody's on number one speaker. All right, the chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed section pursuant to the exemptions from the open meetings allowed by Section 2.2, 3711a Code of Virginia as amended, for the following purposes: publicly held property, discussions or considerations of the acquisition of real property for the public purpose or of the disposition of publicly held property where discussion and an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public bodies pursuant to Section 2.2, 3711a3, and that's District 2, 5 and 6. District 2, District 5. Legal matters, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice from such counsel pursuant to Section 2.2, 3711a8, White Clift Presbyterian Church. And personnel matters, discussions, considerations or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disappointing or resignation of specific public officers, appointees or employees of any public body pursuant to Section 2.2, 3711a2, and that's council appointment, boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies and appointees. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Councilman Berluci?
Aye.
Councilman Holcomb?
Aye.
Councilman Redmond?
Aye.
Councilman Hallahan? Aye. Councilwoman Ralston? Aye.
Aye. Okay, we'll recess into closed. Take a.